We need, we have a request from Steven Greenwood, District Three, to enter by Zoom. We're having trouble getting them on. Can we go ahead and get a motion for that?
I'll message Chairman, I'll move approval of the electronic petition.
Sir.
Chris.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Alright, that was approved. And while you're still doing that, I'm gonna change up a little bit and ask that everyone is standing. We do a moment of silence even though we normally don't during a work session for Captain Jason Guire of the Chesterfield Fire Department that was in a fatality in King Queen and for the folks in Mall. Thank you. Still not on? Greenwood.
Hey.
Okay, it was approved, you can join, so we've done roll call if you stay here.
Here.
Alright, thanks, sir. Alright, and have you reviewed and do I have a motion on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
I'm sorry, I have one change myself. Eight B is gonna be moved to the August twenty eighth meeting.
Let's chair, I'll amend my motion to reflect that change.
Second.
Chris.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Morin.
Hi.
Mr. Miskalski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
And our special matter is the Library and Superior's Discussion. Tom Shepley, John Edwards, and Mary Shipman are here from the Library and Elaborate Board.
Good evening Chairman Hodges, I'm Tom Shepley from the Muckey Regional Library, Member of the Board.
Yeah, I think we asked you here, correct? We did, and I think the members have some questions that, and we're getting legal advice to on what we can do or not. Anybody wanna start?
Well, I know that it's library's position as a First Amendment issue so far as even the segregation of books to a different area and requiring basically juveniles to have a different card. Is that still the the standard of-
Could you repeat that? I'm not sure what you-
It's, I've gone to the assumption that we, at one of our meetings, I had mentioned maybe segregation of the books to move those books in question to a different area. And I was under the assumption that the Muckey Regional Library considers it an invasion of First Amendment rights to do that?
I think that's safe to say. It's, yeah, I mean, there have been court cases where the court has found that moving materials for one audience, some, excuse me, somewhere else does violate the First Amendment, yeah.
What about the cards? You mentioned that we didn't go into detail on having a separate card for underage.
I don't wanna do all the talk to you either.
I just did, yeah, I know.
The, a question about having different types of cards for different age people or some other criteria.
Right.
That's something that we chose, the Library Board didn't choose to address that as an issue when they were reviewing the policies.
But the books in question are not made unavailable, they're just segregated such that children cannot really easily access them. That's not denying anyone that wants to check those books out. Maybe it's semantic, but I personally want to protect a child that goes in there and starts wandering around from being able to pick up a book that their parents may feel is inappropriate for that age group.
The library feels the same way. The library relies on the parents to make that determination for their children, but not for everyone else's children.
We, I think we all understand that, you know, the Muckey Regional Library, their, your board dictates that, but it, Andrew, is it a possibility under the First Amendment to keep those books, still keep them in the library without removing them? I think it is a couple counties that have done. And somehow segregate them, keep them in there. Is that a legal possibility under the First Amendment without giving anybody any trouble?
Well, first of all, there are no guarantees in such a thing. Second of all, you know, as you know, this is a matter that the Muckey Regional Library has charge of. Really, this board has power of belief pulpit, which is pretty much what's going on tonight, as well as budget appropriation subject in agreement with public Muckey Regional Library. On the First Amendment issue, it's absolutely true. The courts have looked very negatively toward attempts to restrict access to books, whether it be placing them in a different part of the card catalog or, 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 you know, segregating them to a different part and then requiring some sort of steps to access those books. The reason is that the courts have really looked upon that as a First Amendment issue. And as soon as it's categorized as a First Amendment issue, just like any other First Amendment issue, regulations are typically struck down. There's strict scrutiny of the regulations. And if there is a regulation that meets a compelling public purpose, even then, the regulation is looked at to say, is it the narrowest possible way to achieve that public purpose? And so typically, these types of restrictions fail one or more of those tests. That's how the courts look at it. I think that there's some common sense ability for the Muckey Regional Library to categorize books. I certainly think they already do that informally by placing some in the children, some in the, you know, young adults, and some at the adults. But, you know, there is no restriction on people wandering stacks. And that's really, I think, where this issue arises. You know, I think that there are things that the Muckey Regional Library could potentially do, but they would need to weigh the risks of that versus, you know, what they're going to accomplish, and they need to be advised by their counsel as to how that's going to meet the constitutional test. And I assume that's done. I mean, y'all have counsel. And so I'm sure that they have talked to their counsel about the issue and the difficulty of it. And I think because of the difficulty of it, they've chosen to err on the side of letting the parents sort of be in charge of the kids as opposed to categorizing for them. I hope that's an answer to your question.
It'd be difficult also, and I don't agree with a lot of these books that we've seen brought here. However, where do you stop that? I mean, to what book do you, you end it? And it's like, well, that's really not. And it would depend on every person, any of it have different opinion.
Who sets the standard? That's the question.
That's what I'm getting at. It's very diff, it's not easy.
A large part-
Glad I'm not in your shoe.
A large part of the reason, you know, I asked for y'all to come, because other counties seem to be, it is at least two other counties that are doing it. So they are probably in harm's way. I just wanted the First Amendment issue explained publicly so everybody could try to understand it. And the board has no jurisdiction over what y'all do anyway. It is your life.
It's board.
Yeah, the Board of Supervisors has no jurisdiction over y'all. It is your library. I just wanted to get that out there so everybody could consume it chew on it for a while.
May I ask the counties that you're referring to, sir?
Oh, Bodatot was one.
And it was another.
Possibly one.
You have one?
The Bodatot.
Yeah, I think so. And they are requiring a separate card for juveniles per the article.
Are those regional?
But they, you know, they have different legal councils too, so.
Are those regional? Yes, they said they're under a board.
Bodatot is not. No. And I believe that that proposal is something that their Board of Supervisors has given their Library Board. I don't think that that's been approved and enacted by the Library Board. That's more of an idea that it's being discussed, which is fine. I don't think it's been approved.
May well be. Well, I just saw the articles. I don't know what it was, whether the board had approved since the first of August.
Mr. Greenwood, with you being remote, do you have anything?
Not that I know of at this time. I was just hoping we'd find maybe some kind of legal clarification, but like I said, I didn't think that we had any, any control over it anyway, so.
We don't.
Yeah.
I think when you get into when any type of public body tries to get into the business of restricting access to material, you're gonna really quickly run aground in a First Amendment fight. And again, I think, yeah, you get to that point in where, you know, where does it, where does it stop? Where does control of access? You know, begin and end, you know, they've had a few specific examples thrown out, but it's not, and again, it seems to be shifting sands under that as well. You know, we were initially brought a bunch of, you know, young adult fiction geared towards, you know, teenage kids, older kids, you know, we're talking about Bodatot, talking about restricting access to certain materials to people that are, you know, eighteen and up only, and the materials that they're restricting are things that would be geared towards young readers, whether it's got material in it that you find objectionable or not. You know, my experience with my own, especially my oldest, who's an avid reader and reads a great breadth of things, is, you know, they're drawn to what they're, they're drawn to. It's, you know, when, we use the Muckey Regional Library a lot. We also use the Williamsburg, James City County Regional Library. I've been my wife's membership there because she's a William and Mary employee, and, you know, I trust what my children are looking at there because, A, I'll generally look at what they're looking at anyways, just to make sure it's not outside of their age group. And then it's just, you know, I don't know. I've got a lot of opinions on this issue, and I know probably differ from others. I just think that the types of material that you start getting into when you start talking about restricting access to material, it becomes a dangerous territory for any government to try to enter into. And not end up seriously infringing the rights of people to access to material. Because the First Amendment, as I understand it, also provides, you know, not just your ability to say or produce something, but also your ability to access something. Instead of produce.
And this is government information.
Right, right.
Well, nobody believes in the Constitution anymore than me, I can tell you that. I just wanted to, you know, explain so many questions out there, so many people, their, their own opinion. I didn't hear that. I think that you're not supposed to be participating. Mr. Garthright, is that what? You can come to, well, this is the chair's job.
Well, it's not.
I'm not, I'm not sure what that argument was about, but I mean, the moment of silence is itself a compromise to comply with constitutional restrictions on, you know, church, you know, sanctioned church activities taking place in government property. You know, it's an example right there. The Constitution was framed in a specific way to, you know, protect certain viewpoints from becoming either, you know, the sole possession of the government or one that's restricted by the government. So that's-
The framers remembered well what they had to endure coming out of Europe, so.
Anyway, we've had three of your, well, three of y'all compete here. Anybody else would like to say anything? Are you good? Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, Mary Shipman. I'm on the Board of Trustees. I just wanna say simply, I have been using the Muckey Regional Library now for the forty-five years that I've been here, which means I use the Hanover one. I took my kids to that library. We've never ran across anything that was questionable or whatever. I take my grandkids to our library here on Sharon Road, and we've never ran into anything. So that's been my experience over the time. I, if you, there are two hundred and thirty thousand yes, sets of material books. So if you hunt for it, you can find it. And it was a fact as an adult, I was a big Stephen King fan. And, you know, it wasn't the library's fault that it was like, whoa, I can't sleep for three nights. It wasn't their fault. That was my choice. And, you know, stopped reading Stephen King, but that's it. I haven't had any, my kids love going to my grandkids. They love going to the library and participating in the program. So that's, what's good for us might not be good for everybody else, but what's good for everybody else might not be good for us. But if you wanna take your grandson to the library or to any of the programs, I think you'll be really pleased. But that's just my experience. Thank you.
Thank you. You have anything else?
All right.
Anything, anybody else on the board?
I would just-
But, go ahead, Travis.
I would, you know, my viewpoint on this is that, like Miss Shipman just said, you can, you can go just about anywhere that's got printed material and find something that you're gonna personally find objectionable. You know, if you're concerned that you know, your child is going to find material that you personally find objectionable in a library, you do have the freedom to choose not to go to the library. You have the ability to choose not to let them freely browse on their own if you're worried that they're going to come across something on their own. It all comes down to, again, that there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of freedoms and a lot of choices that are being made between, you know, arriving at a library, which in and of itself is a choice, to having a child access material that you might personally find to be objectionable. That then restricting what's there strips a lot of that choice and agency and freedom from a lot of different users of the library. You know, if you really wanna get into it, I mean, a lot of these books that are being, you know, thrown at us as objectionable aren't geared, but they act like they're geared towards little tiny kids, and they're not. It's just not the, not the fact. You know, they're geared towards young adults, you know, teenagers who, you know, might find that material helpful at a certain point in their lives, you know, and who are you to tell them that they can?
Right here.
Well, that's it. If you got access to more objectionable material in the palm of your hand than any library could ever lay bare before you. So, no, I don't, I don't get the push, and I don't, you know, I'm not gonna support a push to restrict material in a, you know, in a public library. It's just, it's not, it's not our place. And I don't really think it's, you know, the Library Board's duty in that instance, you know, there. The library should be providing, you know, a breadth of different viewpoints and materials for people to, you know, to find it enjoying. And again, we're talking about kids finding it. The parents have to have a role in that. They've got to be engaged and active and know what their children are reading and looking for and finding it. That's how.
The article that I sent to all this morning from Hanover, them being the dominant owner and user of PRL, if they were to bow out and take their toys and go somewhere else, it's gonna deeply affect us. That's inevitable. So is there a way, it seems easy to put the onus and responsibility on parents, where I feel it should be, first of all. But are there things that we can do or influence the PRL Board to help accommodate where it makes sense without infringement? If there's anything that they can come up with on their own. I've not heard, I've seen a lot of Facebook posts, and I've seen a lot of a lot of pros and cons, but officially, is there anything that the board has come up with? I'd like to hear from them, really.
Got me.
The PRL Board?
Yes.
So-
Is there an official PRL Board statement? Plan of attack?
Well, so let me talk a little bit about some of the actions that we have taken, the Library Board has taken. They spent time, they reviewed the collection policy that we worked under. We expanded it to clarify how the collection works. So that was, you know, expanded and updated. We added a policy about library programs and about library displays because they're very often sort of side by side with the collection. Again, to help clarify, so customers that are finding materials difficult, understand why we have to have multiple viewpoints. There's a resource that we've had for many years called Novelist. It's a subscription product. And it says, like a database, you'd have to go to it and log in with your credentials from the library to be able to access it. But it gives you information about tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of titles, helps readers find books that fit their interests. And so we actually spent about ten thousand dollars expanding how that works, so it works within the catalog. When you're searching PRL catalog and you see a book, you wanna find out more about it, the link's right there. So we've done a lot to increase access to that information about materials, to help people find the materials that they're interested in. The phone Mr. Hodges was holding, that also contains plenty of information about all kinds of materials. So if you had questions about what's in a book, you can use that yourself and find, you know, you can find your tribe on the internet so that you are receiving information from a perspective that is more aligned with how you feel about things. But again, as a public entity, that's really hard for us to do, you know. I don't know that, I don't know that you agree a hundred percent with everything that Mr. Garber thinks, as a, for instance. And, you know, and so that gives you that opportunity to be a better consumer of the books and materials that you're using from the library. So we've, we've taken a lot of action. We've explained this to customers and put resources behind it as it is.
What does a librarian do when when a scenario comes up that a child has, Ms. Jones, Ms. Jones, what's this book all about? Do they intervene at any level?
I'm sorry, is Ms. Jones the parent or the librarian? I think they would have the same conversation with this, whoever the individual is. And, you know, talk to them about, well, have materials lots of different viewpoints. I suspect if there's a child there, they're gonna be talking with the child's parent.
But that is, that is written into your policy, whether formal, informal, I assume, that they're not disallowed to intervene, I assume.
They're not disallowed to intervene, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be our role to act as, as the parent for a minor. That is, that is also not appropriate, so.
Getting involved, true.
Kind of, yeah, get cut both ways. But, yeah.
Alright, I appreciate it. I hope we won't waste your time. We probably needed a touch breaks again.
Anytime you may.
Thank you.
I thank all three of you.
Thank you all.
Right, the next item, Mr. Hodges, is the ordinance zero seven two three, which is a public hearing on the King William County Code, eighteen days, one word full pedal.
Good evening, gentlemen. The proposed ordinance amendment you have before you and that we'll be holding this public hearing on, it's an amendment of the Peddlers and Itinerant Merchant Tax Ordinance, and it would clarify where mobile food units, otherwise known as food trucks, falls within our licensing and tax structure, creates a separate subclass of itinerant merchants, allowing them to be licensed at a different amount than other itinerant merchants. Proposed amendment lowers the flat fee of food trucks to thirty dollars, it's previously two hundred and fifty, as well as lowers the flat fees of all other itinerant merchants to thirty dollars. This began, it came to our attention that the fees of our food trucks were much higher than surrounding localities. I'd also like to add that we have received further legal counsel to strike the portion of the amendment that has to do with refunding of already paid fees. If the board wishes to do that, there are other avenues to do that, and but putting it in the ordinance is not the right place for it.
Questions?
We're gonna do a public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Well, just, just, when, when we were reviewing the agenda first, it was mentioned that the Commissioner may, may have some issues with this? Has that thing cleared up at all?
She has made comments to me about she would prefer to see, thinks it's worth looking at anyway, that instead of there being a flat fee for food trucks, but that there be a, maybe treated more like regular restaurants, which would pay the business licensing fee, which is thirty dollars for the first fifty thousand dollars worth of sales, and then have a rated usage after that.
This is exactly what we talked about at the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Would that notionally be only for those sales within King William?
Yes.
Yes. Be hard to track and police, I would think.
Well, if you get somebody you don't wanna report, it'd be hard to track anyway. Or difficult.
I think it's overcomplicating things that I find before we got in front of us.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, at this point, we didn't do a sign up for this. At this point, I will open up the public hearing. You have three minutes to talk on the public hearing matter. Anybody that would like to speak at this time, come forward to the podium and identify your, your name and your district, if you would. You got any requests? I haven't seen no one last call. Right, I will close the public hearing on zero seven days twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, approval of the ordinance?
Second.
Can approve. Chris.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Morin.
Hi.
Mr. Miskalski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Right, the next item we have up is a presentation of friends of King William- Right, the next item we have up is a presentation of Friends of King William Animal Shelter, Clyde Crispin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you for the opportunity to be here to uh, to address you this evening about the Friends of the King William Animal Shelter. So I'm going to make this real simple. I'm going to tell you who, why, and what. So who we are, we are a group of concerned citizens who've come together to support. And enhance the programs and the operation of our animal shelter. And I'm also pleased to tell you that the entire board is here tonight. So if I could take a moment, I'd just like to introduce. Um, again, I'm Clyde Crispin and I am the vice president, was elected to be the spokesperson for the meeting this evening, but I'd like to introduce Nancy Heiser, who is our president. Marie Kosick, who is our secretary, she's the one that does all the work. Lisa Mason, who's our treasurer. And we hope to give Lisa a lot more work to do, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. And then rounding out our board is Ann Allen. Donna Klein. And Melanie Boto. And then also on our board in an ex officio capacity, uh, right now is uh, Lori Vitz, who, who is the, of course, director of our animal shelter.
Lori. Lori, we'd like to at this point, thank you for your service. I know you and I don't always agree on every sign in the rules, but, but we do appreciate the work you're doing. I'm sorry if I interrupted.
Oh, no problem, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, and then last, I'd like to uh, introduce Dr. Caitlin Mason, D B M, and Dr. Mason is our medical advisor to the board. So why are we doing this? Like most local governments, King William does a great job of meeting the mandates of state code to provide. For the care of lost, stray, abandoned and unwanted animals. I first became involved with our shelter back in December when my wife and I saw, decided to adopt a border collie. And I've had, uh, I've had to rescue dogs my entire life, and this is my first experience with the animal shelter here in King William. And I was so impressed with the process that we went through in the adoption. That I ended up, I saw a flyer looking for volunteers, and so I decided to volunteer and uh. Um, and, and I'm glad that I made the decision to do, to do that because I soon learned that there are many challenges. That face every animal shelter and our animal shelter is, is, is no exception to that. From being over capacity to having do- dogs and cats with significant medical needs. To dealing with behavioral problems such as a court ordered uh, bite quarantine. I also learned that the shelter has an eighty-four percent live release rate, which is actually really good. For a shelter that's mandated to take every animal that is brought in through those doors. And that is thanks to Lori Vess and her staff. They do a fantastic job working with the resources that they are provided. In meeting those requirements. But there's a lot more that can be done above and beyond what the state law minimally mandates. And so as I met with other volunteers and supporters of the shelter, I realized that we all shared the feeling that we can do more as citizens. Our ultimate goal is to identify strategies and activities and funding sources. To increase our live release, release wa- rate and to provide the best medical care, the best outcome for adoptions that we possibly can. So what are we doing about it? We began meeting in April, and I want to thank um, Mr. Ashcraft and Mr. Hodgens for, for being supportive of, of, of this effort as we move forward. Um, but we began move in, in April to establish the Friends of the King William Animal Shelter. We received legal counsel in setting up a nonprofit organization. If any of you have ever done that before, you can find, you'll know that it's a fair amount of work that goes into it. Um, and we established the board of directors that you just met as, as, as our first staff. We established a statement of purpose and bylaws. We have completed all of the paperwork to form a nonprofit corporation. And have submitted that paperwork to the I R S to establish a tax exempt organization under section five oh one C three. Of Internal Revenue Code, and also that allows to receive an employee, excuse me, an employer identification number. So that we can re- receive tax exempt grants and donations. We are in the process now of creating a logo and creating a website. And we've also established several committees, and these committees can pretty much summarize what our various goals are. First of all, fundraising. Second of all, medical needs. Special events, for example, some of us are going to be at the um, farmer's market this coming Friday. And that is part of our mark, our marketing efforts as well. Recruiting more volunteers and educating the community and educating our young people about the importance of caring for these animals. We're identifying several spe- uh, strategies to help the shelter. And I'll give you just a couple of examples. One that's very effective is a trap neuter and release program. Where we go out and we can find uh, stray feral animals. Bring them in, neuter them, and then release them back. The goal for the shelter with this is it's going to reduce our workload in the future. And the more we can do this, it's a very safe, very humane way of preventing an unwanted outcome with animals that might otherwise end up in the shelter. We'll be looking for funding to address medical needs that will enhance an animal's ability to be adopted. For example, many of our dogs are heartworm positive. And that's got to be treated and it can be expensive to treat, and that can be a barrier towards a dog. That would otherwise be a wonderful family pet to being adopted. We'll also be looking for funding and volunteers to create a foster care program. Not everyone has resources to necessarily adopt a, a, a family, a pet into their family, but they might have the resources to help us out for a short period of time. And so the idea with the foster program, those animals are still in the custody and control of the shelter, but we have citizens that will help us to meet their needs. We did some preliminary research to see what's going on around the country, and again, we are not alone. There are many, many, many um, localities throughout Virginia and across the nation. That uh, that have friends groups or foundations like this to help to support the county government, the local government. I found a, a list of fifty-six funding organizations throughout the country. That gave over nineteen thousand grants to over seventy-seven hundred animal shelters throughout the country totaling six hundred and sixty million dollars. We'd like to bring some of those resources here to King William. There's a lot of corporate sponsorship. That we'll be looking at in addition to, you know, getting soliciting donations from private citizens as well. But again, our goal is to, to help our animal shelter be the absolute best it can. And I appreciate the opportunity to uh, brief you this evening so that you're aware of what we're doing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'll probably ask for a couple from my team here.
What is your area?
So that's a great question, Mr. Chairman. We decided to focus, and the main reason we did, it's a couple of reasons. Number one, all of our volunteers that have come forward. And said they want to be part of this are King William residents, and so we're, we're focusing on King William, but in our bylaws, and as you know. Our shelter currently has a, operates through an agreement with King and Queen County, so our bylaws are written. Uh, so, so that we, so any other localities that are participating with our shal- shelter will certainly look to, to support. We'd love to have more support from King and Queen County citizens, and if that uh, was to come, we would, but we started out. And then, and again, our bylaws were written sort of flexibly on that issue so that we can, I think it, it actually says surrounding communities. Um, so we certainly will accept support, but our focus is right here in King William County, and again, our, our, our board is all King William. Uh, local folks. Pardon me?
Including the town.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Matter of fact, our president hailed uh, West Point.
Are you getting into any competition with, was it the Indian River? Some of the, some of the other humane societies?
They do a lot of girl.
Mr. Morton, that's an excellent question. The answer is that we look to be partners to enhance that relationship. And what I will tell you is from the research that I've done, the funding sources that we are looking at are funding sources that are focused on municipal animal shelters. Indian Rivers, um, the types of, and also the, I, I mentioned some examples of some of the types of programs we're doing. A lot of the grant funding that I've researched and found is available is, is focused on specific missions like that. And so our goal is not to be in competition with any of the other groups, but to work hand in hand with them. The shelter already does a lot of work with uh, Indian Rivers, and we, we'd love to be able, this, actually, I would say that this is a way that we can enhance the work. That, that some of these other groups in the area are doing.
I'd just like to thank you for everything you're doing. This is a great guy right here. He. When I'm jogging, sometimes he's out there picking trash up on Manfield Road. He volunteered his time. He adopted a dog on the shelter, just like he said. He's, he's great. I wish more citizens could step up to the plate. Thanks for everything you're doing. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Yeah, I have any questions, Mr. Chairman, just that, thanks for taking the initiative and, and you all getting this going. Um. You know, I look forward to seeing where y'all can go with it, and you know, we'd be happy to support you any way we can.
Great, thank you very much. Do you have anything?
No, that sounds good to me. Yeah, thanks.
We appreciate. Uh, have you thought about? You know, like wounded warriors a monthly donation? You know, uh, for direct, I, I know you're just getting started, so.
I think the answer is that we'll accept any donation anytime. Right. So I know that as, as part of the discussions we've had about standing up a website is that for the website to be able to take correct, correct card payment, PayPal payments. So certainly someone that wants to, to, you know, commit to a, you know, monthly or quarterly kind of donation will be great. Um, I will tell you that my particular focus is going to be on corporate sponsorship. Um, we have a couple of large employers here in the county that uh, may be related to the pet industry that we could look at, for example. Um, we uh, we, we already are working with uh, organi- with corporations. That uh, I, I do know provide um, uh, grant funding, and then, and, and the one thing I forgot to mention was really important about what we're doing is. These companies aren't going to give money to King William County. They're going to give money to five oh one C three, and that's really where the importance of, of us setting up this friends group. And setting ourselves up as a nonprofit corporation, and then all of those, that grants, that, uh, that of course donations will be tax deductible. So there's, there, there are corporations out there that are looking for great opportunities like this. I've already made some preliminary calls. And the other, one thing I did forget to mention too is that we set a goal of October one. Our, the ball is now in the I R S's court, but we are under, we, we feel from that what we've been advised by council, legal counsel. That use about sixty days as our max turnaround, they're actually turning a little quicker, so we, we expect, our goal is by October one to have the E I N in place. So that we can go out and start to do more work.
Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Funkhouse, I think you're up next with the resolution twenty-three days fifty-five.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. The amount King William County receives for property tax relief has been set at one million, two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars since two thousand and seven. This amount does not change, and as the population in King William County has increased, so has the tax base for personal property. More people mean more vehicles, and consequently, the percentage of tax relief decreases most years. Because the one point two million needs to be proportioned to more vehicles with higher values. There are five hundred and sixteen more personal vehicles in two thousand and twenty-three compared to two thousand and twenty-two. This year, the percentage for tax relief is twenty-two point one percent. When I presented the preliminary personal property tax numbers on July tenth, I estimated that the relief would be about twenty-two percent. I am requesting the board approve a tax relief rate of twenty-two point one percent.
What was the rate last year?
The rate last year was twenty-nine point five percent, and that was because the tax rate went down a dollar. And so that increased the tax, the P P T R A.
Chairman, just yet, um, are we getting a feel yet for um. The overall scope of the values, how they're coming in. I know there was a prediction that they would.
Yeah.
Uh, get more in line this year. What are we, what are we seeing in actuality?
I, since from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Cars and trucks have decreased about twelve percent in value. But um, motorcycles and vans have decreased about seven percent in value. Overall, the values have increased from twenty-two to um, twenty-three. From. Twenty-seven point seven million to twenty-eight point eight million. The increase in personal property tax revenue, with the information I have now, would be an increase of almost one point. One million, four hun- one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars more than last year. That was actually billed. I don't know what's actually billed, what's actually collected, because there'll be abatements and supplements to that. You know, during the year.
So it's getting there, but it's not all the way there.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I was looking at the numbers. So. Values have increased twelve percent and seven percent. The P T T R A, that decreased seven percent, so people are getting a seven percent less discount. But when the tax rate went up from two sixty-five to three sixty-five, that was an increase of like thirty-seven percent in the tax rate. So most people be paying a little bit more this year than they did last year.
Well, that's why I'm sitting here thinking, and I don't like to have these discussions just right off the cuff without having given people the opportunity to crunch numbers on it. Should we be looking at making? An adjustment again this year?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I did talk with um, Mr. Ashcraft and Mr. Hodgens and Julie on Friday and did ask them to look at that. So, I mean, if you want to put this off until the twenty-eighth and they have time to punch numbers, now you have to have the book to. By September first, but if you do it on the twenty-eighth, it's, you know, I could do it on Tuesday, the next day.
We have a meeting next week, so could, could we have something preliminarily by next week? It is a joint planning board meeting, but we could.
Well, I think, you know, on the twenty-eighth would be fine. I mean, I'm not going to be here next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so.
Did, did I hear you correctly that uh, the rate is going to work out to somewhere around one point seven million more?
One point one million more.
One point one.
And that was with the reduction, a dollar reduction last year?
Yeah, so last year. I, cars, trucks, you know, motorcycles and vans were taxed at three sixty-five. Now, when I do, and then the value of twenty-two, all the assessed value. Or like, the tax in twenty-two, at the end of the book, it says how much was taxed was. Six point eight million. So now I ran the numbers in twenty-three. And every, all personal property is at three sixty-five. There's no lower rate for cars, trucks, vans.
After that rate last year was two sixty, uh, not three sixty.
Yeah, so now at three sixty-five. You know, everything at three sixty-five, then the tax goes up to um, eight million, so it's like a one point one million increase. Now you can do the special rate again this year for just bikes, motorcycles, cars and trucks. So it wouldn't be all personal property, it'd just be those four categories.
Same classes that we.
Yeah.
Reduce the rate on that.
Yeah.
Right.
I did another, I did another, after I had the meeting with um, them on um, Friday, then Friday afternoon. I did the values at um, I just. Off the top of my head, I did three forty, twenty-five cents off and a dollar fifty-three for the town, and that brought the county's revenue. Down like four hundred thousand dollars. So. To just seven hundred and twelve thousand, down from one point one million, so about four hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
But I don't know how much is in the budget, and I, I run the book and it says this much tax. That doesn't mean you actually collect that much tax. Things aren't paid, there's abatements, so you'd have to look historically. What was in the book and what was actually collected that year.
Right, and last year, when we had a little bit more time to think about this, we also did an exercise where we tried to calculate something close to the value of the additional cars.
Yeah.
Trucks and that class would come into.
Mm-hmm.
Onto the rolls that year.
Yeah.
To, to try to set a rate that.
Yeah.
Capture revenue from incoming. You know, taxable assets without necessarily increasing the tax on assets that were already garage in the count.
Absolutely, that's right, the five hundred and sixteen.
Right.
And so like on the sheet, like the average price. Of a car in the county in two thousand and twenty-three. Was nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And in two thousand and twenty, the average price was ten thousand, seven hundred. So I have this spreadsheet and it's like thirty-four. So I have this spreadsheet and it's like thirty-four more. Motorcycles, four hundred and sixteen more cars, and I have the added value for each one. So you could calculate what the increase would be.
Well, Mister Chairman, my my preference would be to be given an opportunity to review a couple of options and discuss that with staff and do this uh at the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering what we had in the budget.
Well, we need to look at that.
That's what they would have to look at. Yeah.
I'm okay with that too. Let's look at the numbers again and come back before the end of the month.
All right, that'll be fine and um. It doesn't shake me about long term run the numbers, you know, like what they gave me some idea what they wanted. You know, but then. When I ran the numbers at three forty, then the PPTRA was twenty-four percent. So if if you decrease the tax, the PPTRA also goes up. So that helps the citizens with their bills.
Right, so we've we've got to find out there, but we can't adjust the PPTRA. We just we've got that number.
I say, so we are looking at some to that, you know, specific people like in our office, we're looking at our own because we can do that. And you're paying maybe like thirty dollars more than last year. So like at this rate, it kind of keeps it equal. You know.
Right, well, I think our goal that what we set out last year was again, you know, capture.
The regular growth.
From things that 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 you know came on the rolls and I think. As I'm sitting here thinking about it, that while we. You know, work through the remainder of this tapering off of of that explosion and.
Yeah.
Car values is is that maybe the goal would be to to try to achieve that again this year, but we've got to get look at what numbers you can produce and how that's into what we've.
Okay. Yeah, I can run more numbers next weekend, Thursday and Friday. Or even if they, you know, get me some this week, I'll be here. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So which A A N B will be moved to the point. You good?
Can we not set the PPT? Well, if we adjust the rate, then the PPTRA is going to change, so.
Yeah, the PPTRA. But it is what it is.
Right, but if you. Yeah, if you increase the total, the see, it's 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 not the ad valorem, it's the actual tax revenue that PPTRA is relieving. So if you decrease your taxable, your actual revenue. Then you're increasing the PPTRA. But the fact that the ad valorem stays the same doesn't change. The fact that the PPTRA will.
Next item up is resolution twenty-three days fifty-seven of them that King William County. Year twenty twenty-four budget law enforcement equipment.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here to ask tonight for your approval of resolution dash twenty-three fifty dash fifty-seven. For um King William County was awarded the Elliot. Arfa law enforcement equipment grant from the Virginia Department of Treasury and the amount of two hundred and four thousand dollars. Um this is a grant that um Captain Hamilton went after and was awarded. It is a zero local match, so there's no local match for us. It has to, its end date is June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, so you've got a little time to spend it. Um the plan is for one police interceptor fully outfitted. Two drones to include vehicle storage. Rifle rated shields for our schools and each patrol sergeant's car. Um rifle rated ballistic armor and carriers for each deputy. Rifle optics and weapon lights for existing patrol rifles. Handheld cameras for patrol deputies and investigators. Um replace aging and obsolete tasers for all deputies. And converting some existing shotguns to a less than lethal ammunition. And pepperball launchers ammunition for patrol sergeants. Have any questions?
I do, but I'm sure that we would not know the answer.
The captain is here.
I'll see him. He's ducking. Uh captain, the drone acquisition, does that include FAA certification, training, et cetera?
And you come up.
You're coming up here, guys, everybody can hear you. That's uh.
Cyber space. I doubt Mister Greenwood could hear you at all.
Sorry.
Uh good evening. Uh we actually did place uh training into that grant, uh but were denied because of it was specifically targeted for equipment, not training. However, uh in the meantime, we've actually found a local citizen that works with training uh students uh down at there at West Point. Uh that drones and that hopefully will be a good working relationship to maybe partner up with them. Maybe beneficial for our officers getting certified, uh fly the aircraft as well as uh some partnership opportunities.
Well, as I understand it, law enforcement is not exempt to FAA certification.
Not at all.
Okay.
FAA won't accept.
And it's just a liability more than anything issue.
Well, there's a lot of uh additional uh. Restrictions placed on commercial operations, but certainly constitutional issues for law enforcement uh that we have to make sure that we're on the right side. Before we uh put those in operation.
Sure.
We. Did we have a cruiser in in this year's budget or? So 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 this is one additional.
It doesn't. It doesn't obviate the need for the cruiser that we have budgeted?
No, not at all. Uh one of the thoughts is to take one of the older model uh vehicles that's high mileage better suited for a drone. Uh platform as far as the equipment and then trade that out to actually get additional benefit of.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, congrats on the grant. Thanks a lot.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-three fifty-seven.
Second.
Any further?
Mister Moran.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garth.
Hi.
Chairman Panti.
Hi.
Thank you. Next thing I think is Mister Hodgins. Coming back to your utility rate study discussion, item D. Touch base on, I think we'll go, but when the last time there was.
Right, um. So gentlemen, um we in utilities have been looking at uh. Getting a utility rate study. We have not had a utility rate study. In my memory here, I don't know if it's been done since the the first hour was done. Um we've only done things internally, looked at surrounding localities, but never this comprehensive look at. What are our costs? What are our assets? What's it going to take to maintain them going forward? Um so this rate study would do that. It compiles everything. You've got. Different scenarios forward and uh what rates and connection fees uh would be necessary to support that. Um we've we've put out, we've procured for some uh rate studies. We've gotten some quotes back. We have internally agreed on one. Uh this getgreatrates.com, which actually has a partnership with a uh rural water association that we're a member of. Because of that, we are eligible for twenty-five percent off of their rate. Their fee, I've spoken to him on the phone. Um I've also conversed with him about how his initial proposal had sewer rates and. Educated him that HRSD sets those, not us. And we don't actually own sewer assets, uh so it would only be a small amount of uh hours put into uh sewer connection fees. Otherwise, I would just want to bring this to your attention uh to get any any kind of comments you might have. What do you want to see out of this study or if you have any concerns on it?
Can you propose that this be paid for out of the existing?
Yes.
What we have in the bank.
Yes, this, yeah, it doesn't require any budget amendment and it's not coming out of the general fund. This is utility um professional services budget line.
And that's the eighty hundred thirty-seven.
Correct.
Any other question?
I don't know. Their their proposal narrative is unlike anything I've read recently. These guys seem like they're going to bend over and do anything they ask them to do.
It's interesting, that's for sure.
All right. I think it's a good. All right. Next item up is for the superizes request. Be honest, I don't remember the U A. He just had a birthday today. Is that right? Yeah. In that case, then Mister Garber, you start. Well, I'm going to be real easy. I don't have anything at all to say. In in your honor.
Correct. Uh my birthday's not till next Tuesday.
Um I was just wondering, I heard we had a baddie meeting this morning. Do we find out anything good from it or I was just still curious about internet? That's always top of my mind, so.
We focus ninety-nine percent of it on your scenario. We think it's uh what we heard is positive. It's just getting through the details.
Sounds good.
We learned a lot. We actually learned a lot this morning, so.
Wow, good. Yeah, and I just said I didn't catch the beginning of the meeting, but I heard you all said so. Uh uh had maybe. Moment of silence for the people in. Hawaii and it's it's really bad there, so. Um Maui, that was the old historical uh area of Hawaii and it's, I mean, it's demolished. It's like my house in St. Stevens. It's everything's to the ground, so and. Just a similar notice, lightning struck two houses down here at the beach last week and burned to the ground too, so the. The natural things that are happening now, it's just getting bad, so just want to pray for everybody all around the world. That's stuff's going on, so. Thanks, everybody.
Excellent.
Good morning.
I've been trying to think of something and can't make it happen, so I'm.
Two weeks, we, well, in the last two weeks we have a meet, but uh. Two weeks, we can go back to it again. All right, and with that, I'm going to do the same thing with nothing there. Uh thank everybody for coming, as always. Each day going home and do I have a motion?
Mister Miskowski. Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garth.
Hi.
Mister Moran.
Hi.
Chairman Panti.
Hi. He is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, y'all.